Dear God, and invisible with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to welcome everyone, and at this point, we'll go into open forum. If there's last chance, if anybody's here for open forum for an item that's not on the agenda, now's the time. Seeing none, I'll close open forum and move on to reports. My report's first, and I'd ask, Monday night, we had our Sister City signing ceremony that I want to thank several staff members, Jenny Babiar and Larry McIntyre for the details with the planning and as well as decorating. Glenn and everyone in IT for being available and making everything work right. Again, what we did was, we Skyped them at eight in the morning there, or seven, eight in the morning there, seven o'clock here, or something like, so we signed it together. It worked extremely well. And especially want to thank Angela Yang, who is now our official Sister City ambassador, for all the work, time, and passion she put in. And then I'd ask Larry McIntyre, who also was very instrumental, to maybe talk a little bit about the program and then show some, I'm sure you got some pictures.
Thank you, Mayor, Village Board. Yes, I thought ceremony worked really well on Monday, extremely exciting. There were so many things that could have gone wrong, including, you know, the Skype connection, of course, IT, we had like three test runs prior to that and made sure that everything worked well. Additionally, at the last moment, we got a video from Judy Su, which we didn't anticipate, and so it was great to work that in. And then, and then what maybe I didn't share with people on Monday night, but there was, the signed documents for the Sister City agreements were lost, or did not get to us on time, nor to them on time. So it was about a week delay, and in both cases, we received our documents on Monday. We should have received them the week prior, and we got them on Monday, so I had many sleepless nights over the weekend. But anyway, it all worked out well. I think first, I'd like to play a video. This was Judy Su's welcome and greeting to everybody that was involved.
Hi, everybody. This is Judy Su with ABC Seven. I just wanted to send a huge congratulations to the official signing of the Westmont Taiwanese Sister City program. I know this has been in the works for quite some time, and it is now finally coming to fruition. And to our friends at Xinju Xian in Taiwan, I just wanted to do a brief introduction of myself. We live very close to Westmont, and I admire their leadership in pulling all of this together. I have many friends at the Taiwanese Cultural Center, which I know has been in Westmont for over 20 years, and this is such a significant step in our cultural exchange program. So I look forward to seeing many, many more of these programs coming to Westmont, and I look forward to seeing our friends from Xinju Xian come visit us. So for now, a huge congratulations once again to the mayor of Westmont and your entire team, and also to the governor of Xinju. Thank you for this partnership, and we look forward to seeing you, and we look forward to many, many years of this terrific partnership.
So I thought that was awesome that that pulled together at the last minute. And Judy has agreed to be an honorary member of our Sister City Committee, so she'll be active moving forward as well. I'd like to show a few pictures. Glenn, if we can get this on the overhead. This was the picture at the end of the evening. It's caught me off guard, caught me off guard because we had not planned for this. And on their end, they came up with the idea that if they all stand in the picture in the background, we can get a group shot of absolutely everybody. And so I just thought that was an amazing way to cap off the evening. Couple additional pictures. Here's a shot of the mayor right after the signing, and then after he was displaying the signed agreement, and the magistrate of Xinshu. And then after we did the Sister City signing agreement, then Superintendent Carey was there to sign the agreement for the student exchange. Another item that was unveiled that evening was the logo. This is a graphic design friend of Angela, and his name's Luke Lin, and we had worked really for like two months, and once again, this sort of came together within the last...
Tip it up a little bit, it's got a weird glare on it.
It's also right here.
That's true.
A little better?
That's good.
But to describe a little bit of the significance behind the design, of course, at the top is the W for Westmont. At the bottom, that's the character for shoe, and that means bamboo. And so it's in the shape of bamboo, and the coloring across the logo, bottom left side is blue, which is Sister City color, and it's also a color of Xinshu. But then the green in the middle represents the bamboo, and then as we get to red, it's the brick of Westmont. And so we were very excited about how that turned out. And then the final item I'd like to show, if Glenn can put this up on the camera. This was the work of art that was created by Fanny Moy, the local artist who also did our historical painting as well. And this is a gift that we will be sending to them. Angela returns this weekend, actually, so I'll send this to Xinshu County next week. But that character in the middle is for friendship. And then top left is the field of blue for the American flag. Bottom right is the field of blue for the Taiwanese flag. And then this is, of course, the gateway to Westmont, and top left is the gateway to Xinshu County.
Very good.
All right, thank you.
Again, thank you, Larry, for all you did to make that happen. I have one other item, and it's the world-class Westmont update. We've been getting a lot of questions from the community regarding the project on the Hilton property. There have been ongoing conversations and negotiations between the developer and the homeowners association. After the meeting tonight, there'll be a press release on our webpage. So anybody who wants additional information, please look for that press release. That's all I have. I go to Clerk Simmsy.
I just want to congratulate you, Larry, and Larry, and everyone involved in that signing. It was lovely. It was enjoy, I mean, it was just so overwhelming, almost, I couldn't believe, like you said, that we were all talking to each other and could see each other. It was fabulous. And IT did a terrific job getting ready for that. So congratulations to everybody. And my little friend that is Taiwanese, Ming Lee, loved being here. She really got a big kick out of being here. So that's all I have. And everybody get out and enjoy cruising nights right now. It's a good time to be out. It's beautiful. The rain has stopped, so go out. We only have two more after tonight, so get out there.
Trustee Guzzo.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. We will be moving the Finance Committee meeting that was scheduled for 9/14 to August 31st. We will be discussing the funding of our public works facility, confirming our plan for funding, with the intent that we will know which route we are going to take so that we can have an agreement ready for engineering design services on our 9/14 meeting. And then secondly, I also want to thank everybody for Monday night. It was actually a great, great opportunity. It was, it was just wonderful. It was nice to see everybody, and the turnout was great. And just welcome to the Westmont community, Xinshu County. And that's all I have here.
You say it better than I do.
She did good.
Yeah. Just, and I should have added this before, and I think Judy Su said it, the Cultural Center has been in Westmont over 20 years, but four years ago, they built their own building on 63rd Street, and their Cultural Center is one of 13 in the United States. So we've been blessed with the opportunity to have them in Westmont, and the relationship has been tremendous, not only with the educational, but the economic. They've become good friends of the community. And what I found out when we did a little statistics, there's 16% of our population is Asian. So this is a huge program for us, and there'll be a lot of benefits down the road. So I would just want to add that, and with that, I'll let Trustee Addington talk.
Thank you. Couple of things. First one is, this is, as I said, one of the last cruising nights, but tonight, the Westmont Lions Club has their two buses out there doing free screenings. One is the hearing bus, so any wife who wants to find out if her husband has a real hearing loss or selective hearing loss, take him to the bus and get screened. You'll find out immediately. The other bus is the diabetic retinopathy bus, and they, the technician will take pictures of both your eyes. Those photographs are then moved on to an ophthalmologist who will examine them, and if he sees anything, you'll get a, you'll get a referral letter from the Lions of Illinois Foundation suggesting that you go further so you can have professional testing. Those, both those screenings are free, they are screenings, they are not tests, but it's free to the community, and the Westmont Lions Club is very happy to offer that again this year. And the buses will be out there until nine o'clock tonight, so you have time. The other thing is Strategic Plan Committee met last week. We continue to work on the plan and on the various elements of the plan. The goal now is that staff is pulling together all the information and how a lot of these different parts of the plan tie together. They'll re-present their report to my Oversight Committee in November, and then the plan is to do an end-of-the-year, year-end report to the full Village Board on where we are at with Strategic Plan. One of the things that's interesting is that staff has really got into this, if you will, and we had a presentation at committee meeting before this for community development, and our community development people, Jill Ziegler and her staff, included how each of the elements that they were reporting tied back to the strategic plan and the different elements there. So it's a, this is a big undertaking, and staff is working very hard at it, and I think myself and the other members of the Oversight Committee are very pleased with, with where this is going. But come November, we'll have another meeting, and at one of these, probably the first meeting in December, Steve, I think second meeting, we have a conflict anyway with Christmas, don't we?
Well, that's taken into account, but I think it's earlier in the month.
So probably we'll do it at the earlier meeting in December, there will be a, a community report that'll start at this, start here.
You saw the committee meetings, that they had their own staff reports, and once every committee starts doing that uniformly, then we'll add the strategic plan tie into it.
Good. The other thing is economic development. That continues to go forward on a very positive basis. We will be meeting again on the first Wednesday in September, which is September the 6th. We meet at nine o'clock in the morning in the room behind me here. Again, it's open to the public, and anyone who would like to come and see what's going on with economic development, we always do a lot of updates and a lot of other things. The other thing to mention with regard to economic development is, there has been a lot of rumors of late about things that are happening mostly with Hobby Lobby, that somehow there was rumors out there that they're leaving us. Hobby Lobby, as far as we know, from Larry Forsberg talking to their corporate offices and even the people here, that is not happening, at least as far as we know. Although, again, the reason I'm mentioning it is because there was a water main break, and they're temporarily closed until that gets fixed. I said, "The timing couldn't be worse." Here's these rumors, and they're closed because of a water main break. Hobby Lobby, as far as we know at this point, is not leaving. The water main should be fixed in the next day or so, hopefully, and they'll be back in operation. But I did want to mention it because the rumor will only pick up on the fact that they're closed and say, "Oh, see, we told you they're going and they're not going." And the last thing I have is, last Sunday, I had the pleasure of attending the celebration picnic for PVPN. They passed out a lot of awards to people for, you know, the best child and the best adult actor and actresses and singers and shows. And again, they have done, they've done a tremendous job with the, with the talents and the people that they have, so congratulations to them on another successful season, and they're looking forward to next year.
All right.
And that's all I have, sir.
Thank you. We'll move over to Trustee Nero.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a few items. I want to remind everybody that the September 11th ceremony is at the police station at 6:30 PM, so please attend. They always do a great job. And then next, I'd like to remind everybody that we're currently still recruiting for EMA members and members for our Community Emergency Response Team. Please call the fire department for more information at 630-981-6400. And then last, the Citizens Police Academy is still taking applications. First class begins September 27th at 6:30 PM. They are available on the police tab of the Village website, and that's all I have, sir. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Little.
Thank you, Mayor. The next Administration Committee meeting will meet Thursday, September 28th at 4:30 in this room. Please join us for that one. We have three more cruising nights. Tonight's one of them. Tonight, we have motorcycles and veterans. Next week is Fire Truck Night, which everybody loves. And our last one is August the 31st, wrap it up. So everybody, please come out and enjoy the good weather. Not a lot of it left. I keep thinking about winter coming and don't want to go there yet. We do have a prostate cancer 5K run coming up on Sunday morning, September 10th, on Pasquenelli Drive. And the US Luge tryouts will be held in Westmont on Saturday and Sunday, September 16th and 17th, on Cass Avenue between Richmond and 55th Street. So definitely turn out for that one, and we'll see if I'm out there in my EMA uniform or not. I don't know, we'll see. And then the last thing I want to do is invite up Larry Forsberg to talk about the Halloween events coming up in Westmont.
Thank you, Trustee Little, and good evening, trustees. We're asking for some help. We're looking to name our fall and Halloween activities in Westmont. Obviously, one of the really great things about Westmont is the great scope of community events that we have. Historically, we've had a very successful trick-or-treat trail. This year, it's scheduled for Saturday, October 21st, from 11:00 AM to 1:00 PM. Over the last few years, we've added the pumpkin smashing contest to build awareness of the pumpkin recycling program. Last year, we added the caskets-on-cass race. The Haunted Forest has been going for several years now, which has been a great hit. So we're looking to put an overarching brand and theme to that. And also, we're going to, you know, the discussion's even gone a little bit farther. We want to include events like the haunted, or excuse me, the Last Straw, which starts on the first Sunday of the month, all the way through the Halloween Day, the trick-or-treat. So we're looking for some help. Good, if you go to the Village of Westmont website, there's a place you can click right there on our press releases, and we ask if you could please come up with a suggestion or two for a name for our theme for these fall and Halloween events. So we ask for your help. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Larry. And that's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. I go to Trustee Barker.
Thank you, Mayor. Two things this evening. The first one is, Monday night, August 21st, at the Westmont Library at 6:00 PM, Westmont First will have a meeting. It's probably going to be a pretty lengthy meeting in that we had a couple of schedule changes over the summertime, and we're going to pick back up with what we need to do there at Westmont First. So I ask everybody that wants to come out and join us to please do so. And then prior to this meeting, at four o'clock today, we had a Community Development Committee meeting, and we had a very lengthy discussion and conversation and presentation on the Sign Code and all the hours of work that went in to the Sign Code development and cleaning all of that up, and thoroughness that went into it was just remarkable. And we did make a recommendation at that time to bring that to planning and zoning, so we're excited about that, and it looks to be a real improvement that we can all get behind. And then also, there was a discussion about a comprehensive plan, a comprehensive strategic plan to beautify the corridors in town as you enter Westmont or along the train tracks and all of that. And staff has been putting together a program there that looks very exciting and very nice. We're looking forward to hearing more about that in weeks and months ahead. And then as chairman of that committee, I just want to say how proud I am of the work that they do. It's a great staff, and everybody could tell that was at the meeting today that talk about giving 100% what they do on behalf of community developments. Congratulations to them, and job well done. That's all.
Well, thank you. Trustee Barry tonight is absent. He had elective surgery. He'll be able to see better next meeting. Clerk Simmsky has a couple bullet points for him.
The Environmental Commission is working on updates for the Village website to assist people with information regarding what can and cannot be recycled. Westmont bike trails are being mapped. Richmond Garden hives are buzzing. Stop by and check out that activity. Clardon Hills in Westmont are ironing out the details of the intergovernment agreement for Richmond Garden, and following that, the board will adopt the IGA as a resolution. Clardon Hills is working with the pro bono engineer and designer to evaluate the current budget for Richmond Gardens and bring costs down so groundbreaking breaking can begin this fall.
Thank you. Moving on the agenda, items to be removed from the consent agenda. Is there any trustee that like any of the items?
You remove anything, it'll disappear.
Yeah. This is the shortest consent agenda. I'd ask manager May to please read.
There are only two items on the consent agenda this evening, first being Village Board minutes. Board to consider approving the minutes of the Village Board meeting held August 3rd, 2017. Second, and lastly, is Finance Ordinance Number Eight, in the aggregate amount of $1,959,166.80.
Do I have a motion to approve as presented?
Motion by Addington to approve.
Second by Little.
Motion made in second to approve. On the question, trustee, anybody in the audience? Seeing on roll call, please.
Trustee Addington?
Yes.
Trustee Little?
Yes.
Trustee Barker?
Yes.
Trustee Nero?
Yes.
Trustee Guzzo?
Yes.
Motion passes. We do not have any unfinished business. We'll move on to new business. A, 339 South Park, fence variance. Board to consider ordinance requesting a zone code variance request from Brandon Wood to allow the construction of a six-foot solid fence with a required side yard adjoining the street setback in the R3 Single Family Detached Resident District. I got Director Ziegler.
Thank you, Mayor. The applicant is requesting to install a new fence. This will allow his family more privacy in the backyard, particularly for their dog. This is adjacent to 55th Street. We've had very similar variances in the past, and his yard is one of the few that doesn't have a six-foot privacy fence. Planning and zoning commission made a unanimous positive recommendation, and staff also recommends approval.
I have a motion.
Motion by Addington to approve.
Second, Nero. Motion made in second to approve. On the question, anybody in the audience? Any trustee? Seeing on roll call, please.
Trustee Addington?
Yes.
Trustee Nero?
Yes.
Trustee Guzzo?
Yes.
Trustee Barker?
Yes.
Trustee Little?
Yes.
Motion passes. New business B, 218-220 North Cass, Doche Vita Day Spa. Board to consider ordinance approving the following request to allow the operation of a ground-floor day spa in a B1 limited business district. One, a special use permit, and two, a development permit. And we got Director Ziegler.
Thank you, Mayor. The proposed day spa would use two currently vacant tenant spaces, which have been unoccupied for some time. The applicant is looking to purchase the building and move here from La Grange, where he's had a very successful business, so he's looking to expand it. While retail is recommended in our Tiff District, this is going to use an existing space. You know, we know retail is not as popular as it once was, and we think this will be a viable use that will not need a lot of parking, or it's not going to use more than, more parking than what's provided. Planning and zoning commission made a unanimous positive recommendation at the August meeting, and the applicant is here if there are any questions or if he'd like to explain more about his business.
Would you like to comment on it, or? You can bring the kids. He can sleep on your shoulder.
This is Simon from Doche Vita.
My wife is the owner of the spa. Fortunately, she had to stay at work, so I'm representing, you know. So we've spa business for over five years in the village of La Grange, moving from originally like 600 square feet place to 2,200 right now. Since we have our contract expiring in like a year and a half, we're trying, we are looking for some new location to purchase. Since rent amount is kind of high, almost $4,000 a month right now, that's why we're looking for a new place, and we found this location very convenient with a lot of parking spaces, decent price, and close to our old, old place, which is like six miles away. And we got already base of customers, over 780 actually right now, VIP members who're coming every month, so plus, of course, a lot more customers and very, very good, you know, opinion on our websites and yeah, Google. Still developing, so that was the reason to move to bigger place, and as I said, we found this location very nice, and, and we're trying to, you know, renovate it and, you know, grow. That's, that's simply, you know.
Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve, Nero.
Second, Little.
Motion made in second to approve. On the question, how long have you been in business in?
My wife is in the business for 10 years, but the spa was founded six years ago, and five and a half years, we started the business operating in La Grange. Originally, La Grange Road, now Burlington Avenue, La Grange next to the station, so 2012 in this place, since 2012. So 2019, the rent's gonna expire, so that's why we try to, you know.
Well, thank you. Any other questions from anybody? Seeing on roll call, please.
Trustee Nero?
Yes.
Trustee Guzzo?
Yes.
Trustee Barker?
Yes.
Trustee Little?
Yes.
Trustee Addington?
Yes.
Motion passes. Welcome.
Thank you very much.
We'll move on to the next agenda item, which is C, new business C, the increase in available Class II liquor license. Board to consider ordinance increasing the number of available Class II liquor license by one for Fremont Grill, 1115 South Fairview. And I know Deputy Commissioner Mulhern has had a lot of research on this, and we've been looking at it, and tonight, he's here to present it.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Village Board. Owners of the Fremont Grill have applied for a Class II liquor license to operate a restaurant bar at 115 South Fairview, the site of the old neutral zone. Applicants have complied with a background check and are eligible for a Class II liquor license. The applicant's proposing a restaurant bar business with a full menu. Applicants previously operated similar businesses in Naperville and Aurora. They plan on making interior and exterior improvements to the current site. Staff recommends an increase in the available number of Class II liquor licenses to allow the liquor commissioner to issue a Class II license at the Fremont Grill. With me tonight is Genevieve and Marwan Zayed. Genevieve is the 100% owner. Her husband, kind of their other role, is the manager. She's the boss of the business in the face. They are proposing a restaurant-type business. They are making some changes. They'll be moving the bar, and I'll let Genevieve and Marwan explain all that. There has been almost little to no interest in that strip mall, and for at least, especially in this business, it's remained, I won't say vacant, but unoccupied for possibly a year since the closure of the neutral zone, and this would be a welcome to that area. They have gone through an extensive background check, but I will say, they are, met every requirement that I asked of them in a timely manner. If I asked for... If I asked for something in the morning, they were getting back to me by the afternoon, and that was very rare, and usually that doesn't happen that fast. So, but you don't want to hear from me. I'm sure you want to hear from them, so I'll introduce to Genevieve and Marwan Zayed.
Welcome.
Welcome. Thank you.
Thanks. My wife and I, we've been in the restaurant business for about 13 years, actually longer. My family's been in the restaurant business since the '60s, had the bond ever since. Ran my first two places in Naperville and Aurora from the 2000s, early 2000s. Sold it, retired for a little while. Now just getting the itch to want to get back into the, to the, to the business again. And we offer a friendly atmosphere, good food, good times, and no problems. That's Tom's contest, too.
Now we can hear from the boss.
I would have to say the same. We're offering hospitality, a good menu, a nice social atmosphere, something to do in the evening and during the day. And again, we look for safety, and we have a menu developed, and that can change in time depending on how the customers view it and some of their maybe suggestions. And like Marwan said, we've been in the, his family has been in the business, he has, we have been in the business. I come from a background as well. My, I worked with my mother during college. She owned a cafe, and I grew up in San Francisco, so she owned a cafe there, so I did a lot of work and support there with her. And we're comfortable. We're used to this atmosphere, and we're really excited to be part of Westmont, so we are looking forward to it.
And what, what hours?
Um, the hours?
Currently, the hours are going to be from lunch, from 10:30 to, or 11:00, not sure, till, and I'm not sure where we're going to go with the closing hours, because I'm not sure what the, the neighborhood is going to be, whether it's going to be 12 o'clock, 1 o'clock, or whatever it's going to be, maybe 10 o'clock. It all depends on what the business is at that point. If there's business at that time, then obviously I'm going to stay open. If there's not, then I'm going to close early and go home, you know? But we've gutted the place from the inside completely. Looks nothing like the old place. We've shrink the size of the bar. We've got more dining space than we have bar space. So we went from a 68-foot bar area to a 41-foot, 41-foot bar that's going in there. So it's not going to look like that. The atmosphere's not going to be what it was. The paint's coming off the window so that people can actually see inside the restaurant and the bar, so.
A lot more visual.
Yeah.
And open, a lot more welcome, welcoming looking.
They, we talked about this, too. They're working with code enforcement, Jason. If you are familiar with the current location, there's a prison yard fencing out front.
Right.
That's coming down. Yeah.
Any other questions? Oh, trustee Addington.
Yeah, just so that we know where you're going, are you contemplating down the road looking for video gaming?
As of now, that's not why I'm coming in here for this, but if, if, if the opportunity arises, yeah, sure. I mean, why wouldn't I? I mean, it's an extra income, but like, like I started from Tom. Tom started from the very beginning. Video's not an option right now. I'm like, I understand, but I'm not doing this for the video. I'm doing it because I think it's a great spot for a restaurant, and I think it can add something to the community.
What's your menu going to be like?
It's mainly going to be elevated bar food, so good burgers, really good burgers, her recipe, good wraps, chickens, great chicken sandwiches, wings, stuff like that. On an elevated level.
Appetizers.
Yeah. It's a little different.
Oh, yeah. Sunday, we're thinking about doing a brunch in the morning. A buffet brunch, a mimosa buffet, all you can drink mimosos. That's a big thing in the, in the city, where they do it in the city. So we're thinking about it. That's not going to come down for a while, but.
A while, yeah.
Yeah, that's not for a while.
And doing my research, checking on their previous business one in Naperville, there was a Yelp, and it mentioned the brunch. And Marwan had said on Sundays, the bears are still in until the end of the season. He wishes to have it on Sundays with the bears, as well as he's going to have a larger amount of TVs, and to put that aside, mainly for that you can go on the NFL package on Sundays. You want to watch a game from anywhere in the country, he'll have it up and you'll be able to go and watch.
Yeah. And this is a little different than Compre 2000 that you had, Jim, when you were authorized.
You had to bring that up, didn't you? Actually, that was Mayor Bellary's. I just inherited it to clean it up.
Well, do I have a motion? Oh, trustee Little.
Do you know when you'll be opening roughly?
I'm hoping for October.
Wow.
Thank you.
Yeah. Like tomorrow, the plans have already been approved by the village. I just got to go pay for the permit tomorrow, pick it up, and the construction's actually going to start tomorrow.
Get your license so that you can, yeah.
Sounds like a nice upgrade.
Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve, Little.
Second, Nero. Motion made in second to approve. Any additional comments from the public, trustees? Seeing on roll call, please.
Trustee Little.
Yes.
Trustee Barker.
Yes.
Trustee Nero.
Yes.
Trustee Guzzo.
Yes.
Trustee Addington.
Absolutely, yes.
Thank you very much.
Welcome. We look forward to your grand opening, and Larry Forsberg, our chamber director, if you haven't met him, he's right there, and we'll publicize and get you going.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you. Good luck.
Will you have a, will you have a little side room in there if we wanted to have a little meeting?
Absolutely.
Hang on, I'll lion's plug.
Oh, that's fine.
Oh, you mean.
Well, there's not going to be a separate room, that's too small to have a separate room.
Okay.
But if you want, if you want to close down for like a short period of time in the afternoon, I can do that.
All right. Always something to consider. We're always looking for places to go.
It's always like your little end, end part, maybe, that you can always kind of lock off.
And they are active in charity, like fundraisers and that kind of thing.
Great.
I think we were saying, set the tables off to the side so they could have a meeting.
Yeah, that's absolutely not a problem.
Yeah, we're open to all.
It can open, so we can visit you.
Again, welcome. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Moving on, new business D, Naperville Warwick Stormwater Improvement Project, change order one request. Board to consider ordinance to approve change order number one for the Naperville Warwick Stormwater Improvement Project. Director Ramsey.
Thank you, Mayor. Let's talk about it a little bit here. Due to unforeseen utility conflicts, I want to explain that a little bit. We called for Julie back in January, February, and we called all utilities. They all came out and located. And we stressed that we're going to be, you know, really, we talked about exactly what the project was going to be all about. We told them what we were doing, and we asked them over and over again, there's no utility conflicts here at all, right? Correct, there are not. Well, we took them at their word. They located what they said. We dug where they said for us to dig, and sure enough, the utilities were there. Comet, AT&amp;T, and Nycor, all three, the utility conflicts, okay? So I have a meeting next month, second week in September with Donage Grove, with Julie and some other companies that are going to be there to discuss part of the problem with this, because there's no repercussion for them to, I mean, we're going to be out, you know, so much money here because they didn't do their job. And the problem is, it's not the companies doing their job. They contract all the locates out to, you know, a separate company, a private company. So this is something that we've been dealing with for quite a while now, and it's getting very frustrating with us. So we're going to bring it up at that meeting. So, so I just want you to understand, it wasn't the contractor's fault, it wasn't the engineer's fault, it wasn't the village's fault, it was the locating company's fault because they said that this stuff was not here. One of them, they said it was only three feet deep, it ended up being six feet deep. You know, so there's a lot of issues that we had with them. So I just want to make that clear, but I'll go ahead and finish this real quick. So due for unforeseen utility conflicts on Chicago Avenue, directional bore method of storm sewer installation was not feasible, an open cut was necessary. Also necessary to revise the storm sewer sizing to fit across Chicago Avenue. Originally, it was planned to go 36-inch storm sewer all the way across. We had to reduce it down to 20-inch to get underneath these utilities to make sure we can get across. So we're asking for a change order number one of amount of $74,388 to include maintenance of the traffic for detour, storm sewer resizing, and temporary asphalt patch on Chicago Avenue. The original contract amount was $930,679. The change order number one will be revised to, so the contract will reflect the amount of $1,005,067. So this is something, like I said, we've been, you know, it's, it's been very frustrating to us. It's very frustrating to the contractor because he's on a tight schedule, and we're pushing him to get this done because it is affecting a major road in our town. And so it's, it's been frustrating for all of us. So I'm really excited about this meeting in a couple weeks. Village Donage Grove invited me to this meeting. I will be there to voice my concerns and my displeasure with this whole thing.
Keep us updated on that meeting.
Yeah.
Actually, it'll be, it should be right before our next public works committee meeting, or it's a day after. I can't remember the exact date, but I'll let you know exactly what we find out. Dave Annett Wise, who's the regional coordinator for Julie, will be at this meeting, so.
Do I have a motion?
So move, Guzzo.
Second, Barker.
Motion made in second. Any additional?
Yeah, I had a question for Mike. You know, the resizing of the storm drain, then, what kind of impact is that going to have?
Hopefully none. I mean, it's going to, obviously, we, we always try to make, overcompensate a little bit for whatever project we're going to do, so it might just make it drain. It's, it's almost like putting a reducer on a, you know, or a, I can't think of the word right now.
Restrictor.
Restrictor, sorry, on the pipe. It's, it's, it might, so it'll still work fine, it just might take a little bit longer.
It makes it sound like worse than it is, though.
Right.
When you say it like that. It's just a different, they, this, this pipe is going in a place where no pipe existed before, so it's just providing relief to an area that didn't have it. You put the biggest pipe in, you have, based on the information you were given when you started the design, and it's just a little bit smaller, but still, you know, a good useful size.
Okay.
It's better than what we had.
I just wanted to comment, too, that it seemed like some of the information that I was receiving through, whether it was gossip or reports or whatever, that there was a lot of things there that were broken and non-functioning, and all of that's been cleaned up.
Mm-hmm. Somewhat, yeah.
Somewhat.
Still working on it.
There was a lot of good old stuff replaced, the condition and the extent, and there was a fair amount of exaggeration with what that was. It was all stuff that needed to be attended to, but there was no disaster occurring. It was just, everything was just being updated while, while we had it open.
Yeah. Well, and I, so where I'm really getting at is, you know, for the money that's spent, we should see a good improvement in that area based on.
Oh, definitely.
The plan, our intention was this, and we've been able to facilitate that.
Correct. Yes, this goes back to the Christopher Burke study that they did along, and this is one of the sections of town that they really, you know, emphasize that we should do some work in, and that's why we're doing it. You know, it should definitely make a big difference out there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And again, this is an indication of the amount of money it takes to, to correct stormwater issues, and we're going to, we close on the bond the end of the month, and we'll be looking for bigger projects in the next three years. So any additional comments? Roll call, please.
Trustee Guzzo.
Yes.
Trustee Barker.
Yes.
Trustee Little.
Yes.
Trustee Addington.
Yes.
Trustee Nero.
Yes.
Motion passes. New business E, telecommunications agreement renewal. Board to consider an ordinance to approve a one-year agreement renewal with Call One Incorporated for telecommunication services to Village Buildings. And I've got director Wiltzen Berg.
I can cover it, I guess.
And I'll go to manager May.
It's very simple. It's a, it's a one-year agreement. It's a renewal, and these services are, the suburban purchasing cooperative that's here is a, is an entity like IDOT has their own competitive bidding where they do the bidding out in advance, and then it, so that competitiveness is already done before you select these that person, so that's what's being taken advantage of here.
Okay. Do I have a motion? Motion to approve. Nero.
Second, Little.
Made in second. Any additional comments? Questions? See, roll call, please.
Trustee Nero.
Yes.
Trustee Guzzo.
Yes.
Trustee Barker.
Yes.
Trustee Little.
Yes.
Trustee Addington.
Yes. Motion passes. New business F, IMRF Resolution. Board to consider a resolution related to termination of participation by elected officials in the Illinois Municipal Retirement Fund, or IMRF. And I guess I'll turn to the attorney, Zemanak, or manager May, to comment on this.
I will comment on this. Last meeting, the board approved a resolution which stated which elected officials were going to participate in IMRF. This was sent off to the IMRF, and they sent back this corollary resolution which simply lists those positions which are not participating in IMRF. So we asked that you.
They can't just say other, you know, you have.
Other.
You have to, you have to itemize them.
Yes.
So pretty straightforward administrative.
Yeah. And essentially, the trustees, and there's a requirement of 1,000 hours, and they don't satisfy that, so they're not going to be participating in IMRF. Do I have a motion?
So move, Guzzo.
Second, Addington.
Motion made in second. Any additional? Spencer, nothing. I'd ask for a roll call, please.
Trustee Guzzo.
Yes.
Trustee Barker.
Yes.
Trustee Little.
Yes.
Trustee Addington.
Yes.
Trustee Nero.
Yes. Good. Motion passes. Miscellaneous, does anybody have any other items? Did we miss anything?
One quick thing I forgot. 4 o'clock for the finance meeting on August 31st. Everyone is welcome to attend.
Given opportunity, anybody, staff, anything to mention? Larry, none. Other than fire truck night next week is going to be huge, right?
Yes, sir.
All right. If we do not have an executive session, so entertain a motion to adjourn. So move, Nero.
Second, Little.
Motion made second to adjourn. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you, everyone. This meeting is adjourned.[1788.88]